Welcome to the City of Eureka Springs Bozen Planning Commission Meeting Tuesday, April 13, 2021. Bob, if you would establish your call, please.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Ms. Breedlove is absent. Mr. Buford.
Here.
Ms. Schneider.
Here.
Welcome. And Bob Thomas. So we have a quorum.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes of the meeting of March the 9?
No.
Any comments, concerns, questions?
Motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve. The agenda is written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any public comments concerning? No, no public comments. Okay. So we've got a new business, tree removal appeal for 4087 East Van Buren for, is it Brigado? Brigado Tapia? Okay. Motion to discuss.
I make a motion that we discuss?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to come up? Oh, you're there. Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Here are some. Did everybody get an opportunity to go by?
Yes.
Yes.
Would anyone like to look at the drawings? Have you got them?
I think we have, yeah.
Okay. Like to start the discussion? Tom?
I noticed there's going to be two buildings, I understand, on the site. One building is right there off of Highway 62. I notice you want to cut down 15 trees. In fact, some of the trees have already got fill up against them, which means if we don't approve this tonight, the trees are going to die anyway. Since you are right near the highway there coming into town, they're going to cut down 15 trees, what are your thoughts about putting some kind of landscaping between your building on the face of the highway and Highway 62?
Can you repeat that question again, please?
Would you consider putting some kind of landscaping between Highway 62 and where your first building is going to be? It's kind of a buffer between the highway and your building there.
Yeah, it might be a little less, keeping out a big one, a little bitty one.
Well, you're cutting down 15 trees. When you say a little bit, how much is a little bit?
No, the trees that we try to cut, that's for the building.
Well, I understand you're cutting trees down for the building, but the ordinance allows us to require you to plant the trees back that you cut down.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
So could you do some landscaping there between the highway and your building that faces the highway?
Yeah.
Okay. How much landscaping as far as square feet you think you could do in there to make it practical, but still utilize in front of your property?
Can you say that again? I didn't really catch what you said.
How many square feet of landscaping could you do between Highway 62 and your property there where the building is going to be? 15 by 10, 10 by 10, 100 by 10? What can you do?
He said 10, at least about 10 by 10. Between the road? You're talking about between the building and the road, correct?
Correct, yes, correct, yes, uh-huh, yes.
So how? Like 10 by 15 feet?
What do y'all think about there's some kind of a buffer there? Is that the reason why do y'all, or you think we ought to do more?
I'm comfortable with 10 by 15.
Right. Yeah, same here.
I'm not sure I understand what the 10 by 15 is.
I'm sorry. I just, it's my first time to be here, you guys. I mean, I don't understand really, so.
I think what we're trying to say is that since you're cutting the trees down and you're going to build the building, what can you do to make it look really nice and put some landscaping back?
Okay, I understand what you mean.
Okay.
We're going to be planting little trees in front of the building and flowers and roses around it so it'll look nice and presentable for the people that are coming into Eureka.
Okay.
We don't want just to put a big ugly metal building there to make it look bad. We're going to put some flowers around it, some little trees around it, and some bushes that we can grow up, and we'll keep a tandoor, we'll keep them trimmed down and make sure they look pretty and presentable for the people that come into our town.
Okay. So that would be a condition of our approval?
Yes, and I guess they'll have to come back as new construction, when they come back with a new construction of the buildings, and we can look at their plans then, I presume, before we approve the.
Correct.
We can?
The construction and see if they follow what our intent is.
But I can, if it's approved today, and depending on the condition, we can put the condition down.
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else?
The condition would be landscaping along the highway?
Yes, yes. Like you talked about, some kind of landscaping, shrubs, small trees, bushes, whatever.
Yeah, something to look nice to.
Right.
We'll be putting some flowers down, putting mulch around the flowers to make sure that it looks more presentable. And we keep the yard maintained about every two weeks, so it looks presentable to everybody that's passing by, so we don't have no complaints or anything.
Sounds good.
And I want to thank you for, you know, basically choosing Eureka. And actually, I wanted to ask you, what was your decision? Why here? Why not somewhere else?
I've been here for 30, 30-some years, and I've been doing my business for 10, 15 years, and I've been in Eureka for a long time, and it sounds like it's close my town, really.
Thank you. Bravo.
Does anybody have, anybody else have any questions?
No.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application for the tree cut.
I'll second.
Did we want to put a condition on it?
Yes, I should, yeah, let's put a condition on that subject to the landscaping plan.
Right.
And then.
All right, well, I amend that to add the amendment to landscaping plan when the building construction permits amended.
The motion was amended. Is there a second on the amendment?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's been approved, with the condition that when you come back for your building permit?
Uh-huh.
You bring the landscape plan, too.
Okay, we will. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Gracias.
You very much. Have a nice evening.
You, too.
Oh, am I not supposed to prepare this for you?
No, I do it and then you sign it.
Oh, okay.
Because I have the original.
Okay, oh, okay. Sounds good.
Okay, we don't have any unfinished business at this time, and I get a motion to adjourn the Board of Zoning Meeting?
I make a motion that we adjourn the Board of Zoning Meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the Planning Commission. Motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve. The agenda is written.
Could I add, I agree with the agenda?
Certainly.
I'd like to add sidewalk construction repairs and new business.
Okay, we'll add that as number, I guess we could put that as a number two, since Bob's going to give his report first.
Okay.
Do you guys need a second?
Ferguson. Sidewalk committee report?
I second.
That's you.
Yeah, I didn't, I wouldn't, I didn't attend the committee meeting.
Just a second, let's wait just a second.
Do you need, do you need a second? I don't know how y'all are doing.
Okay, so we have added the sidewalk repairs.
New construction and repairs, uh-huh.
And new construction. Okay. Anybody have anything else they want to add? So we have had a motion to add sidewalk repairs and new construction?
Right. Yeah, so I'd like to make an amended motion that we approve. The agenda is amended with the sidewalk repairs added.
I got a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no public comments. So go on to new business. So Fergie, you're up.
Yeah, I was unable to make the, make the meeting they had. It was just too short of a notice, and I wasn't able to get off work at 3:00 on Monday, so I did not attend. I didn't see any emails from anyone from the committee on any minutes, so I don't know what was discussed, or even if they had a meeting. But I did, I'm trying to get it scheduled on Thursday, so hopefully this Thursday we'll have a meeting, and I'll give you a report, but that's all I've got. I'm doing some research right now that maybe I'll bring to the committee, and that's going to be from different cities like Fayetteville and Rogers on, you know, following the permeable surface type material, things like that, to be less costly and get some numbers. But that's basically what I'll be doing for the committee meeting.
Okay.
Yes, we have.
You might follow up with Laura Jo to see if there's any minutes or, you know.
Yeah.
Is this on item number one?
This is item number one.
Have you found anything on rubber sidewalks?
No, no, really, I was just waiting for the first committee meeting, and then, you know, if, depending on who gets us, you know, I'm assuming we're going to break up the committee to different areas because it's such a large area that we would, you know, and I'm waiting for those to be done by whoever's going to be appointed chair on this assessment. This is a feasibility study, so I'm assuming that we would get, you know, areas given to us, and then we would do a detailed analysis on each area, but, so, I haven't really done anything. Nothing's happened yet.
Okay. Rubber sidewalks are awesome. I researched some years ago for council.
Does anybody have anything else on that? Okay, Tom?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. On March 29, 2010, an ordinance was adopted placing responsibility for maintenance of sidewalks on the property owners in Eureka Springs. Under that ordinance, the repairs were needed, and if the property owner did not complete those repairs, the city could do so at the city's expense and place a lien on the property to eventually recoup the cost of those repairs. The problem with addressing sidewalk repair issues through the use of a lien was that it tied up city funds until the property was sold or refinanced. On December 12, 2018, the city passed another ordinance which allowed a lien to be placed on real property's tax rolls, so that lien had to be paid when the property taxes were paid. The problem with that ordinance was the city still had to pay for the repairs of the sidewalks if they only did not do so and wait for the money. I believe in 2019 and 2020, there was money budgeted for this. However, for various reasons, no sidewalks, almost no sidewalks have been repaired under this ordinance. I believe in the 2021 budget, no funds were allocated for sidewalk repairs. Walking down the streets in the historical district, I have noticed that many tourists have problems navigating our poorly maintained sidewalks, which are broken, narrow, and uneven in many places. And when it is not possible, they walk in the streets. Since we spend a large amount of monies each year through the various entities that promote Eureka Springs, a tourist town, it was seen that placing a high priority on repairing sidewalks in the historical district would be a good thing. Many tourists walk down Springs, Prospect, and White Streets and mind the unique architectural and beautiful landscaping, providing basic care to maintaining sidewalks in these areas, which promotes the safety of our visitors and residents. I was somewhat astonished when the city council recently established a sidewalk committee to investigate new sidewalks on Pivot Rock Road and East Mountain Street, when the city is not enforcing its current sidewalk ordinances or providing funds for sidewalk repairs in the historical district. I would like the Planning Commission to consider the fine proposal, and if approved, submit it to city council as a proposed ordinance. Before any building permit can be issued in the historical district for new construction or for interior or exterior repairs, the building inspector slash code enforcement officer must inspect the existing sidewalks to determine if repairs are needed for new construction or a new house prior to retaining, prior to obtaining a building permit. This requirement would cost the city no money, and will ensure some of the sidewalks will be repaired. At the present time, we have homeowners and commercial owners spending thousands of dollars on new construction and repairs who are not repairing their sidewalks, in some cases, removing sidewalks. Thank you.
Well said.
I, I agree with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody else want to chime in here? Mickey?
I was on council when we dealt with the sidewalk issue, and it took us forever. The sidewalk in front of my shop was the very first one done. As soon as we got the whole sidewalk repair ordinance and issue taken care of, you know, settled, I mentioned the rubber sidewalks. That's one of the things that I looked for, because at the time, it was strictly limestone. Nobody could afford the limestone. It took us another, like, what, eight years to finally figure out that's why nobody was doing anything. Rubber sidewalks, and I think they're still going on, are in major cities all over the country. They can look like anything you want, limestone, whatever it is your sidewalks normally are. And what's really great about them is they're two-sided. So when one side wears out, you turn it over. It's incredible. And they had volunteered back then to come out here and do a section, like the sidewalk in the driveway area between the courthouse and this. They would have put that in for us. I mean, it's spectacular. So yes, we need to do something, but the problem is, many, many eons ago, the sidewalks were turned over ownership-wise rather than being the city because it's, you know, public property. The city didn't want to have to be responsible for repairing, so they made an ordinance giving all the sidewalks to the property owners of that section.
But isn't that state law?
It may be now, but it never was.
Okay.
Eureka did this on their own. And it's, if you have to keep your sidewalks open as public property, I don't understand how it can be turned over to the property owners. I never have understood that. But the point is, where my shop was, right over there, there were a lot of accidents of people tripping and falling that I saw and dealt with. I kept a full medical get handy.
Yeah, yeah.
So I know what it's like for them, but between the people not being able to afford to, and the city either can or won't, whatever the case is right now, you know, we have to do something.
Correct, correct. Yeah, and I've interviewed many, many locals about inability to get wheelchairs and things like that, and had handicapped children that they couldn't be visiting them because the kids couldn't get up and down the sidewalks.
Yeah.
So I agree, I agree. We need to, you know, if that's our method of getting the attention to the council as an ordinance, then I think, yes, I think we should, we should push that forward, if only for public safety, okay, and in compliance with the ADA Act. I mean, I remember when I first got here, and I was told that the sidewalks were part of the historic. That's why they weren't fixed. And of course, I found out that wasn't really the case.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, I think, I'm with Tom on this. I think the ordinance idea, creating a, you know, a thing that the city council would approve, and that would definitely, it almost, there's another aspect of the same type of idea in a different area, and that's our sewer lines. You know, if a property sells, then I think they should have to have their sewer line inspected, because right now, our springs are contaminated with sewage, and it's because of the houses above it. So, I mean, there's a lot of safety issues. I mean, we've got, I think sidewalk's a good start. It's a good start for something that's been long overdue.
A couple of years ago, when council was working on sidewalks, the municipal code says that the building inspector shall issue a notice to repair your sidewalks. It also required him to develop, he had developed a list of priority sidewalks in town, level four, level three, level two, and level one. At that point in time, he had identified those properties by their legal description, and he said that he could not send out the notices until he, you know, got the owner's name and address that went with that legal description. But, you know, as far as I know, he's, nothing has been done beyond that, but the ordinance says, you know, those sidewalks have been identified, and the ordinance says, once they have been identified, he has to, to send the notice.
And when was that that was done?
At council? Well, I mean, the code is older, but we were discussing it about, what, a year and a half?
The code was in, in 2010, and what Bob was talking about was 18 or 19, 2018 or 2019?
December 12, 2018.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, my concern about this particular ordinance is, if you have somebody that needs repairs on their building, and they don't have very much money, and you require them also to repair their sidewalk, you may just end up not getting the building repaired.
I agree.
That's, that would be my concern.
Go ahead, Tom.
The sidewalks, in most cases, the lots are not very wide, and sidewalk repairs, people keep saying it's a lot of money, but it's actually not. And it's, as Mickey pointed out, she got the aggregate thing approved by the.
Right.
Historical commission, and I asked Bobby Ray when they, y'all familiar with the pecan tree side up there on Spring Street? We had the big controversy about the tree and the construction there. Those people went in before they did construction and put a sidewalk in. On the way, you noticed there was a brand-new sidewalk there before they started that construction. And I asked Bobby Ray when that happened. I said, what does it cost? He said, well, that sidewalk costs about $700. And it's, you know, it's across the whole lot. Now, that's, that was three years ago. I don't know what cost of going up, but I mean, it's, when somebody spends $200,000, $300,000 renovating one of these houses in the historical district, $3,000, $4,000 is, I mean, it's not a deal killer, I mean. If they're going to spend that much money on fixing up a house, or if you've got a commercial building downtown you're renting for X amount of dollars a square foot, fixing up your sidewalk is not going to keep you from doing the repairs inside to keep your tenants happy, or whatever you rent the building at.
Yeah, because you can use concrete now.
Well, it's in print, yes, I use in print concrete.
Or the aggregate, which is actually older than the concrete. The one going up Benton Street, that's older than the concrete that's on the other part. But I think one of the biggest problems we had back then, when we first started working on this, was most people had no idea they owned their sidewalk. It's not common. It's a public walkway, so ergo, the city owns it. And so, yeah, a lot of people were totally unprepared when they had a visit from the building inspector that they had to pay for. It's not cheap, but at the same time, it's now cheaper than it was.
So is there a motion that we would like to take this before city council as written, or does anybody have any suggestions for different language?
I would like to make a motion, different from this, but connected to it, that our chairperson go to the council and ask them, why is the current sidewalk code not being enforced?
Okay, that's a start.
Better work.
Tom?
And demand an answer.
I have asked that question several times, and, you know, it's, it doesn't appear the will is there to get it done. I mean, there was money there in 2019 and 2020, you know, after the ordinance of 2018 was passed. And, of course, in 2021, we talked about the virus and all that, and this, this money I'm talking about came out of the mayor's budget. He controlled it. I think it was $20,000 one year and $25,000 the next year, and I think it was dropped in 2021, but there's no appetite for enforcing the ordinance. And this is an indirect way to get some sidewalk repaired. It won't cost the city a lot of money as far as personnel and filing liens and going through court or whatever they do. It just says that, you know, if somebody wants to make, get a building permit, they've got a building inspector to get a sign up on the sidewalk. So it's kind of an indirect way to get some sidewalk repaired that doesn't cost a lot of money. Because if we ask the city for 25 grand to do number, the 2018, the ones that are going to say, we don't have any money. We can't do it, you know. Well, this is kind of an indirect way to get sidewalks done, kind of a backdoor approach.
Correct.
Am I not going to get a second?
Oh, wait, I want to. I would highly suggest you make an appointment to be on the agenda and demand, seriously, an answer on why, after all these years, it's been 11 years, why haven't they done anything? And if it's a problem with Bobby not being able to get names, then have the council, the council change it. Say, go by the address. I know we can find out who owns it, so do, you know, tell them to do that. With the planning commission, we can tell them what they need to do. So with Bob's thing.
The sidewalks, the HDC approves those, right?
Yeah.
Sidewalks approve HDC?
They're involved, yes.
So I, you know, I mean, I'm happy to go and talk to the city council, but I'd also like to be able to bring this up.
Well, I'm with Bob on his thing, but let's expand and find out besides why it's not done. Do it.
Like, maybe you could, you could bring this up as our next step, but the council has, I mean, the commission has asked, not just you and, but the commission.
Right.
Has asked, why is the current code not being enforced?
Because it is law.
It is law.
So Bob, restate your motion?
Pardon?
Restate your motion, Bob. On your, your motion, you had a motion on the.
Oh, yeah, I said, I thought I made a motion.
Yeah, I second that. I were changing, but yeah.
Okay, so did you second, Mickey?
Yeah.
It was so long ago.
So, yes, Tom?
Are we saying we're not going to do the proposed ordinance? We're going to just talk to the council and ask them why they're not doing the enforcement of existing ordinance before we do anything on our proposed ordinance here?
Wait a minute, what was the proposal?
Well, the proposed ordinance is what I just said about not issuing any building permits, and now we said we want to talk to the city council before we ask them why they're not enforcing the 2018 ordinance before we do anything on this proposed ordinance?
Well, like, we could do this. I can ask them that question. Kind of already know the answer I'm going to get.
Yeah.
Then I can say, we believe we have an alternative to solve the problem.
Pay it all together.
How, how would that be?
No problem, yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, are we back to a motion on the table?
Well, then I amend my motion to, you ask about why the current code is not being enforced, and if you don't get an acceptable answer, you suggest that Planning Commission has an alternative that might at least, you know, a lot of these buildings are never going to need repairs, so they're never going to get a building permit, but, you know, these would at least address the ones that are getting a building permit.
Okay. Yep. Have a second there?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Bob.
So we need to come up with some things that we want to be working on, like, we do know we need a new telecommunications ordinance?
Yes.
I think we need to look at the SIGN ordinance.
Yep.
I don't know what e-scooters are.
Electric scooters.
Okay. So, motion to discuss?
Yeah, I make a motion that we discuss?
What are we discussing?
We're discussing. We're discussing, uh, recommendations to city council that the planning commission needs to, we'd like to work on.
Okay, since I'm new here, um, in regards to what signage are we talking about?
Um, it was brought to my attention that there's just signs all over town. Signs have gone up without approval that don't, you know, there's not supposed to be banners. Um, again, I think it goes back to code enforcement. Um, we might wanna take, I mean, I'm gonna meet, present to city council just some ideas at the next meeting, take some time before the next meeting and go over the sign ordinance. Um, Fergie, I'm gonna kind of defer on the telecommunications one to you, because I, that to me is a foreign language.
Okay, signs, are we talking outside signs?
Outside signs.
Okay.
Uh, and Bob, I'm thinking e-scooters is yours. Did you bring that on here?
No, I don't know where any of this came from.
Okay.
I don't know, e-scooters, I don't know. But there is kind of an interesting, when we talked about that, one thing I noticed this last weekend, there was a convention of one-wheel scooter, uh, one-wheel, uh, skateboards, I guess they were called. They had the big wheel in the middle of it, and they were going up and down the highway.
Hmm.
And I thought, wow, that's so dangerous, you know? And, and, and I don't even know if we're currently, if, if, what that is, if that's even, you know, allowed. And I couldn't, I just like, I was like, flabbergasted when they were having a convention, and they literally had a parade of these things from, from the Ozark Hotel all the way across on 62. And I saw 20 of them all coming back to back, and I thought, this is, this is very dangerous. And there was no, you know, there's no police, so, yeah, those kind of things, so.
Glenna?
Um, I added the e-scooters. Um, I was contacted, um, it's been about six weeks, two months ago, by a company that does these. Um, they have them in Fayetteville now, and Little Rock, they're electric scooters, um, that they place around town. And, um, you access them with your credit card or, and an app. Um, and, uh, they're getting to be very popular. And apparently, in the last, not this, but the last legislative session, the e-scooter industry has been active in lobbying the legislatures. So, a town cannot prohibit having them, even if they're dangerous. You can regulate where they are and, um, their hours and stuff. But, um, I had a lengthy conversation, um, with one of the companies, and, um, they basically hire one person in town to go and round them up and make sure they're in their locations. But otherwise, they're just kinda out there on their own. Apparently, you can regulate where they are by working with the company, and the company will put like a stopper or something on them, so they can't go into prohibited areas. They're GPS tracked. Um, so, I haven't heard back from this company, because I was like, are you kidding?
So, this is like a motor scooter?
Yeah, it's like a, no, it's a scooter.
You know, you know the kind you put your feet
With two wheels that you used to push with your
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's got a pole and electricity.
And the flat bottom that you put your feet on.
There's a couple of kids in town that have them. But, yeah, and they're, um, electrically powered. So, they're kind of along the line of a, of a Segway, but they're built differently. Um, so, Fayetteville has an extensive code on it, and so, because they have them in Fayetteville, two companies, and, uh, they're also in Bentonville. Um, so, um, we had talked about it, the mayor had brought it up after this person called, um, that we probably do wanna get something on the books. And for some reason, he, he sent it to the planning commission staff, which was me, though I'm not sure it's really a, a planning issue. But since you were talking about stuff to recommend ordinances on, I put it on the list.
These things can go up hills?
Yeah. And what's really bad is because it's not really a motorcycle or a motorbike, they don't need to have a license to drive.
And they don't need helmets or?
Yeah. None of the safety, none of the safety issues.
Wow.
Yeah.
In Little Rock, they can only go on the side. I have a friend who's in the planning department there, and Little Rock says they can only be on the sidewalks. And, um, that's caused all kinds of hassles. In Fayetteville, you can't be on the sidewalk. And they have them at the university too, which kind of makes sense for the university. But, um, around town, um, so.
North Main only?
Well, and North Main's state highway, so I don't know if they can go on state highways or not. Um, I just had the conversation with him and was hoping he wouldn't call me back. But, um, it is something that somebody should start considering and put something on, on the books.
Yeah.
Because they can't, we can't deny them, um, access to our town.
But we can regulate where they can be in town?
Right.
Okay, well, if they call, can you get a little bit more information for us on that?
Um, I have some notes and stuff, and I did some research after I, I spoke to him. Um, I looked up the Fayetteville ordinance and, um, just got a little more information on the scooters themselves, because I didn't really know what they were either. Um, so, if you wanna keep that on your list, that's fine. If you don't, I can
No, um, it's
Okay.
Can I ask Glenna a question?
Sure.
Wouldn't this be very much akin to the horse carriage routes?
Yeah, they, I think they are, they are franchised.
Right.
So, it, it would be a franchise. Um, Fayetteville has two of them, and they are franchised. They have a franchise fee, and then they have a per scooter fee, and they're good for six months or, uh, and, and of course, you've got extra policing involved and extra, um, emergency services, because there's no way there's not gonna be crashes with these things.
So, when they were, you know, developing horse carriage routes and stuff, was planning involved in that at all?
Oh, I, I have no idea. I would doubt it.
Uh, we were a little bit, just a little bit.
Planning?
Yeah, just a smidge, like at the beginning.
Uh-huh.
I mean, no reason not to look at it, but
Absolutely.
hopefully it's not gonna be our decision.
Right, right.
Thank you, Glenna. Does anybody else have anything that they think we need to look at this year? No, you all haven't had a great opportunity to review everything.
What's the telecommunications thing that you said he was in charge of?
I started out, one of the problems we have in, in Eureka, uh, is we have too many dark zones, too many areas where you have no coverage. I know that's hard to believe. But, uh, cell phones right now are the means of communication, period. Whether, you know, um, and, and one of the things that, that we need in the city is something to, you know, basically ensure that everybody has a fair access to that service. And I've talked to the fire chief, I've talked to different, different groups, the police chief about areas that they're having trouble with their communications. And, and so, we don't have an ordinance covering, the city doesn't, on those services. So, um, that's why we have a state. I mean, the Public Utility Commission is really the only, is the go-to, but, uh, the city itself, because of our, the way that we're, we're are, our, you know, we're in a valley, we've got, you know, a lot of stuff, is that if we were to write, you know, something that could be enforceable, or that would be complied with, it would improve the public safety as well as the availability of broadband in Eureka Springs. And that's one thing we don't have right now.
We do have, on chapter 14, point 13, we do have a wireless communications facilities ordinance.
Wouldn't the, uh, the governor's mandate for statewide Wi-Fi cover that? Yes, that's Act 78. There's actually a brand new act, and, and I, I sent a copy to the city, uh, and Ann Armstrong and everybody, and they were looking, they're reviewing that right now. So, they could, you know, the city council could take this on and decide that they're going to adopt this, because that's what it says. Basically, it says that anybody in Arkansas is, is, uh, is worthy of the same service as anyplace else. And the Public Utility Commission has backed this up, basically saying that the ISPs and the providers of those services have to provide the same level of service everywhere, ambiguous. And they're not doing it right now, because they haven't had an enforcement action against them yet. So, you know, like, for instance, Lake Leatherwood. One of the problems we have at Lake Leatherwood, um, is that the ambulances, that the fire department sends down there, say we had a cardio, they cannot get telemetry on the vehicle, because it's blocked out, there's not enough signal there. So, it is, it is a serious public, and I've talked, I've asked the fire chief to write a letter to the mayor, and, you know, and of course, we're still, still waiting for that. But, but that's one of the things that that really is, this is about. This is about, you know, it's foremost about public safety, but foremost about, you know, um, Eureka is a tourist facility. Now, one thing that everyone probably notices is that, in the middle of a Saturday, good luck getting internet service, because it's being sucked up by everybody in town, that, all the visitors. Well, that's not supposed to happen. It's supposed to be the same as if you're in Fayetteville or in, in all the other towns. But we are getting limited service, even though we have five dark fibers that go right through downtown, to Holiday Island, and to Springfield, and the Spring, you know, all the way up and route down 62. But
We have five what?
They're called dark fibers. They're five dark fibers. They're, basically, they're, they're what they call, in the old days, they used to call those trunk lines.
Oh, okay.
So, they're huge, they're, they're huge capacities, and they could easily, you know, give us service, but they're not gonna make the money back. So, that's why Act 78 of the Arkansas legislature passed, this law requiring that, you know, that this be provided. But right now, we don't have a way of reaching into that pot, so to speak, until the city writes an ordinance saying that we're going to adopt this act and, and comply with it, you know, and yet, and, and make sure that they, you know, that the Cox Communications, the, the, you know, AT&T, all the different service providers do that. And so, that's, that's what that would be. So, that's what I'm looking at, the ordinance to
So, it has nothing to do with the towers?
Well, it's a lot, there's a lot of aspects. But we don't have to get into the minutia. But it's just, basically, the generic statement that the service needs to be available for every citizen in your area. You know, not just, you know, you know, so, for instance, if you go to the coffee house, which is, I love, you know, the coffee house, you get 100 megabits per second at the coffee house. If you go next door, you get, you're basically gonna get 10. And he's paying for the same service, but, you know what I'm saying? It's just, it, we gotta fix this. We gotta get, and, and it's all about, how much are you willing to pay? And that shouldn't be the case. It should be, you know, if you, you know, the same person should have the same ability to get the same service, so.
So...
Sorry.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just wondering, could you put that in writing?
Yes, yes.
Put it in English in writing?
Yes, yes.
In English?
I will get that presented to you guys. That's, that's one of the reasons why I was in Green Forest yesterday. I was talking with the sheriff's office, and we were discussing their requirements and what they're seeing in our area. So, I'm trying to get a, you know, a full compass thing, so when I give it to you, it's, it's got everybody in it.
Okay, yeah, so, will I take that to city council and, and try to put it in layman's terms?
Yeah, like I said, English.
Yeah.
I'd just like to make a, a comment that needs no follow-up, but if we had a comprehensive vision plan, you know, you could always take these things and refer back to the vision plan and see how it fits in to the city's plan. Hopefully, the council is gonna do something and let either us work on it, or it sounds to me like they intend to do it themselves. But, you know, it, whatever.
Right.
Okay, so, um, anybody have anything else? Okay. Uh, unfinished business, discussion for a date for public hearing to prohibit new tourist lodgings in R2 Zone. Um, motion to discuss?
Uh, motion to discuss?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What, to discuss?
Okay.
What, what's the I for?
Second, again?
What did we say I for, to discuss?
Oh, a word, I'm sorry, we're, uh, for, uh, the, uh,
Sure.
number one on the unfinished business.
Yeah, so, what, we are now in discussion?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I got lost there.
We're just trying to figure out with the pandemic and everything, what might be a good shot date for a public hearing, or for workshop to talk about this, Mickey?
Okay. Now, are we talking to workshop with council, or a town hall meeting?
More of a town hall meeting.
Right.
In my opinion, for the residents.
Because, yeah, this I have really been checking into, and I'm, I'm a Pisces. I am right square in the middle. I can see both sides equally.
Right.
Um, saying, end it and don't end it.
Right.
So, I would really like to be able to hear as much as possible from our residents.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, and, and one of the things that, that, you know, I've seen in my neighborhood, uh, right there on Harvey Road in East Mountain, is a huge increase in traffic. And I didn't understand what was going on. Well, I followed some of the car. They were out of state, and they were going to the same house. Well, the same house has 10 cars in it, and, and all different, I mean, I thought, well, maybe they're having a reunion, you know, family reunion, right? But I found out that they're, they're buying that house for a couple of weeks at a time. So, it's a, I guess it's a, I don't know, I'm gonna go
Like a weekly rental.
Like a weekly rental. And we're in the middle of a residential, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't know if you know the area, Harvey Road and East Mountain. Anyway, and so I was like, what are you, what am I gonna do? You know?
Yeah.
And, and so, that's the thing that really worries me, is we're, and I'm seeing more and more people coming specifically to buy a house and flip it and turn it into a tourist lodging. I've seen a huge uptick on this in our town. And, uh, you know, um, and if, you know, I, I really think that we ought to let the public, at least, whether we can fix it or not, we tried. And so, that's the thing, I'm thinking that, you know, um, I'm, I'm seeing, you know, I had, well, we had, with those 31 cabins, you know, down there on, you know, for, and, and I interviewed those, those local, and I got, they were so angry about it, but they didn't show up at the meeting. And I said, well, you know, I went back there after we, you know, we, and I said, you didn't show up at the meeting? Well, I didn't think it would do any good. And I said, well, that's, that's why the public forum and the thing, we've gotta, you know, we've gotta try. Now, of course, you know, like, you know, we may not get them to come in, but we have it, I'll check that off my bucket list, okay? I tried. Because that's what's gonna happen. A lot of towns are being turned over like this. And so, you know, the town, one of the problems we have right now is, there's at least 10 businesses I know of here in Eureka that can't find workers. So, as these things are converting to tourist lodgings, they can't find maid services or janitor services to keep them going.
I, I don't understand how these, how they're all converting to tourist lodging. I thought there was requirements to be
Well, that's what I'm saying. The, the problem I'm having, and I'm, I'm not sure if this is what I'm feeling.
Yeah.
What I'm feeling is that, that maybe there's some, some outlanders or some outlaws going on right now.
Right, yeah.
And I really don't know, because I've tried to reach into the code enforcement office, and I've had my hand slapped once. And I don't wanna get slapped again. Okay? So, so, that's all. I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, we gotta make a try.
Right.
Because I just got a feeling that this is, this trend is gonna be coming so, if we blink our eye, these, these are, our neighbors aren't gonna be neighbors anymore. They're gonna be, they've moved to Florida, and their house is occupied from, for tourists that, you know, that, you know, I mean, have 25 kayaks tied to their roofs of their cars. You know what I mean? It's like, you know, so that's what's going on.
Well, I, I agree. I live in R1, and there's been a couple places close to me that have sold. And I see different out of state tags, you know, trying to watch it. And at this point, knowing that they don't live there permanently, all I can do is get with Glenna, and we send a letter and say, you can't do this.
Right.
But, Mickey, go ahead.
Well, see, this is where my being stuck in the middle comes in. A lot of people in this newer generation are looking ahead to their future. They're buying property where they want to retire, so it can be paid off, taken care of, so when they do retire, they can move, like, okay, Eureka, and the house is paid for. The only way they can afford to buy it now, for say, in 20 years, is if they turn it into lodging. So, by cutting off the lodging, like what it says on the thing, you could be actually cutting off residents, future residents. And of course, you probably won't know, just talking to these possible buyers, they probably, you know, they'd all say, well, yeah, we wanna retire here eventually, and that's how we can pay for it. But who knows if they would? But I mean, but see, this is my problem. I understand, and I'm in R2. So, yeah. So, yeah, I could be hit. So I understand wanting to cut back at the same time, it could be our future people. And the one thing that caught me on the vision plan of your housing was the one line that says, "In addition to residences, many upper levels have been developed as tourist lodging due to higher income potential, lack of parking for residents." And this is the, things above the shops in town. So if there is not enough parking for the residents, don't we have laws that a tourist lodging must have X amount of parking? So how can this even be worded like that?
Well, let's talk about, there's no place to hold an outside workshop anywhere.
Well, I, I have two concerns.
Okay.
First of all, it sounds to me like we have decided to outlaw new tourist lodgings and we're going to have a workshop to, to have a hearing on it. I'd like it to be more open-minded, you know, a hearing to discuss tourist lodgings in R2. The second thing is what I see the city always doing is having laws that they don't enforce, so they make another law. You know, if, if people are renting illegally now, why are, what's going to change if you say, "No overnight lodgings in R2"? What's going to change if it's all goes back to code enforcement?
I, I agree with you on that. And you should never pass an ordinance that does not have a penalty associated to it, that is enforceable.
Right, I agree.
But I, it is just an open discussion to, to see what the residents think, because I think really, if enough of them come forward and say, "We don't want this," then we take that into consideration. If nobody shows up and they don't care-
Right.
Then maybe it just goes away.
Yeah, and, you know, and-
But what if a whole bunch of them show up and say, "We want it"?
Newspaper and, and, you know.
Well, we have to listen to that too.
All right.
Exactly.
Because they've already got it, in R2.
Well, I think just if you're going to discuss prohibiting them, that may, if I was, and I'm, like Nikki, I'm right in the middle, but if I was, if I thought, "Well, I don't care about, you know, fine with me, but the meeting is to prohibit them, so I'm not going to go."
Right, right. And, and, well, one of the, the, you know, in the same situation I gave earlier, one of the neighbors that was pro, uh, freedom, you know, he said, "Oh, you know, everybody should be able to do whatever they want with their property," right? Now he stands in the middle of the streets and yells at the cars to slow down. So, you know, I mean, yeah, there's consequences. So, I mean, you know, that's basically the end of this, I mean, you know, it's like, you know, the thing is consequences. So we've got to be able to listen and, and let them know, "Hey, this could affect you and come on in, talk to us about it."
So what do you all think about, do we want to wait till it gets warmer, kind of see how things go?
If I had to pick a date right now, this is a date that's stuck in my head, because June 30th. And the reason why I want to pick June 30th is because that is the moratorium for the stoppage of all the parades. So if the city does decide, which I hope they do, on the 30th of June to allow parade permits, that'd be a great day to have a public meeting.
Uh, city council last night talked about the mask ordinance, which is June the 30th. You know, sunset follows on that, so that, that day ties in with the, you know, lifting the mask ordinance in Eureka Springs, per the ordinance, I think, we adopted last night.
Well, now, let's be clear, June 30th is a cutoff date unless it's renewed.
What?
Unless it's renewed. Now, if all of a sudden, there's another spike with COVID, it'll be extended.
Yeah.
That January 30th is a Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah, June, yeah.
June 30th.
June 30th, sorry.
Yeah.
Well, you might want to have it on one of your meeting nights because all, if you're having it here, all those other nights of the week are taken up by different commissions.
So our meeting in June is June the 8th?
Okay.
Well, we could do it on, oh, never mind, I was thinking cemetery night, but that's tomorrow.
Well, we could push it forward, go July 13th then, I mean, if you want to do it on one of our nights.
I think let's push it out one more month, July 13th.
Yeah, yeah, that way we know if we're being extended or cut off.
Yeah, because we'll also know a bit more about COVID and what's going on and-
So do we keep the same time and the same location, 6 o'clock here and at the town hall? Are we going to advertise it really big and good?
Yep.
All right, discussion of a date for master plan workshop with Jim Von Toglen from Arkansas Municipal League. Glenna, have you talked to him?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to talk to him.
Well, I was going to, and then the mayor I saw send an email to him with some verbiage back and forth. And did you get that email also?
Uh, no.
All right, I'll follow up on that tomorrow. That's the only reason I didn't is because I saw that email go out. I'll call Jim tomorrow.
I, I saw that Butch, um, sent one, but I never saw the reply.
Okay, I'll call him tomorrow and let you know. Okay.
Wait, wait, wait.
Nikki.
Okay, we have a master plan, so what's this workshop about?
Jim Von Toglen, uh, he, part of what the services we get for the municipal league can come and talk to the planning commission once a year, we don't have to pay for it. Given the fact that we have some new members, um, and he's presented on the vision plan, I thought it would be a good idea for him to come, give his take on where we are and everybody can ask questions at that point.
Okay. Let's take a look at the master plan, I'm confused. We've had a master plan for years.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We've had a master plan for years, I don't understand.
You've had a vision plan.
We have a vision plan.
I thought we had a master plan too.
Vision plan's the only thing we have.
I could have sworn we had a master plan, okay.
So anyway, that's, uh, maybe he can get here for the May meeting, because I saw something about that, so I'll find out tomorrow. Okay, commission business, parliamentary procedure rules. Okay. So, I don't know if everybody's got a book.
Yeah, I got a book.
But I went online and I came up with the same thing, the Robert's Rules of Order for small boards, um, which is in here. Um, a small board meeting is defined as one where there are not more than about a dozen members present. At meetings of small boards, a simplified protocol is acceptable. Members may raise a hand instead of rising to obtain the floor. Motions do not need seconds. There is no limit on the number of times a member may speak. Informal discussion of a subject is permitted while no motion is pending and if a proposal is clear to everyone, it can be voted on without a motion. In addition, the chair, if he, she is a member, need not rise to put the question, call for a vote, may speak in informal discussion, debate and vote on all questions without leaving the chair. Chair can even submit his or own her proposals without formally making a motion. The only thing I do not like about this is I think there should be a second motion on items. Um, and I pulled off, it's the same, I think where there is some confusion that has come in is that the planning commission, if you go to page 5 in, 5 in, in your book. During a discussion of planning commission topics with the permission of the chair, a person who has already provided public comment and has a direct connection to the issue on the table may be called upon by a seated commissioner to answer specific questions or provide requested input. We allow people more opportunity to talk, that's already in our ordinance.
What are you reading?
Pardon me?
Page 5 and what?
Page 5 of the, um, at the very beginning, the rules.
Rules, regulations.
Okay, I don't have the same page 5.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, but here's page 5.
So, discussion, motion to discuss on that, that was my thing.
Robert?
Oh, that's all right. Are we in discussion?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to kind of clarify, I know I'm the one that's pushing for these modified rules or whatever to be officially adopted, and I feel like people are just thinking it's just Bob Thomas trying to be pushy. So I've, I've, I want you to know that Robert's Rules of Order says that a society with a small assembly-
Oh, I'm sorry, I could have said something.
Such as one having a dozen or a few members, may wish to adopt a rule that its meeting will be governed by some or all of the less formal procedures applicable to small boards. 487, 488. So it says, here are some that could be applicable, and then it suggests that you have to adopt them. And then at the, so here's, here's the concern. After the chairperson read these, these same rules at our last meeting, then Mr. Buford brought up another item with regards to public comments and said he thought that that was a part of the modifications. So right away, you have, you know, two people at the, and I, did you not bring up another one that you thought was a part of?
I don't remember, I was very young.
But, you know, you've got two people that think, "Oh, I think this is in there, but the other person doesn't." So that's one problem. And when you read from this little pamphlet here, after you read those rules and regulations, the sentence that follows it is that it is recommended that bylaws and other procedural rules be adopted to determine procedures for small boards. I mean, that's because formally adopting those procedures means that all commissioners, present and future, are aware of exactly what are and what are not the rules. Now, my biggest concern is if, if we have been operating with these modified rules for quite some time, then in the January meeting, we had an applicant for a zoning change. I made the motion to approve it and there was no second and this commission took no action because there was no second. But your modified rules that you say you're using says no second is necessary. So I, I don't mind these rules, I don't mind them at all, but, oh, I mind one of them. But I, my point is you have to adopt them and so that everybody can know. And if everybody at the table had those printed out and said, "These are our rules", at that meeting in January, somebody was said, "Wait a minute, he doesn't have to have a second. Here's our rules." So we violated our own rules at that meeting and that concerns me. And that's why I think we need to adopt some modified rules.
So, what I'm hearing is that the booklet that, that Ann read from, if we were to take, uh, that and, and make a vote as a group, that we will follow the guidance set forth in this pamphlet.
Those, those are the exact same one.
Right, no, I understand, I'm just saying.
That pamphlet takes it from Robert's Rules of Order.
We would, we could put our hands around that. I mean, I can, you know, I can put my hands around this pamphlet easier than, than, you know, you know. I just, I'm just saying if, if we were to, because I know I have other organizations and that's what we do. At the beginning of every year, we say, "We're going to adopt this procedure" and, you know, and, and the Arkansas Municipal League, uh, I don't know, whatever that's called, and then we just vote on it and that's what we'll comply with. Is that, and would that, would that do it and would that help?
I thought, I thought that said some or all, that we could adopt some of them or all of them.
Right, right.
So wouldn't we need to go through them one by one and say, "Yay or nay"?
But I think the, the, I think, I don't know, that just seems such a minutia.
I agree with Ann, we need to have seconds.
I'd just point out that in, in your general policies, Rules of Procedure says, "Unless otherwise provided herein or by later action of the commission, meetings of the commission shall be conducted in accordance with the rules of procedure set forth in the current Robert's Rules of Order." So, you know, all you got to do is say, you look at the, the suggest, or the, and the applicable rules, is what Robert calls them, they're applicable, on page 486, and we go through them. And I'll be happy to type it up if we point, if we say, let's, we'll take number one, number two, we won't take number three, we'll take number four, number five. And I'll type that up and then you will have modified rules for-
But we can adopt this right here. We don't, we can adopt this right here.
Yeah, it's already written.
It's the same thing.
I know, but we've got this right here.
Yeah, I'm saying, I put my hands around that, I like that, because it's adopted by all commissions.
What, you mean it's adopted by all?
That's what I'm saying, I mean, basically, if I go to, if I go to Green Forest, they use the same book.
Well, that's fine.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So what, what I'm saying is that other cities have used that as a guidance.
Right.
Uh, and without having to have a, you know, a document in the Rules of Order, they just basically rely on that document.
You're not, are you suggesting we adopt that entire document?
Yes.
No. I want to go one by one, because there's a couple of things in there I don't agree with.
It just, I mean, if, but I mean, at the, the point of the rules is so that we can get to conduct an efficient meeting. You know, I mean, it's not that we are, the point of the meeting is to ensure we comply with Robert Rules of Order, it's to have an efficient meeting is the real goal. And, and, you know, and I think that's really, I mean, we're, 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 that's really the goal. I mean, that's the, that's the, the spirit of, I think, the summary of Robert Rules of Order, is to help small groups have, accomplish something, to accomplish, you know, to, to make something, you know. And so I think that if, if, if we had to stop and, and hide, like, well, like in Congress today, they have an entire, uh, group of individuals, and that's all they do, is they call them in when they have a procedure problem, you know? And, and we would end up, I don't know, we, you know, like I'm saying, I mean, if we just conduct this, if an issue comes up at a month from now or a year from now, whatever, then, then the commission can, or that committee could deal with that issue and, and pull this and say, "Okay, we've adopted this and, and, but we're going to, now because of this issue, we don't know what's going to happen in the future." So we could actually say, "Okay, we can adopt it and we'll change it at that time."
Well, then you'll have to change your Rules of Procedure.
Okay, well, I mean-
Why not do everything at the very beginning? So if there's 10 things listed, you go through them, 1 through 10, and you say, "Yay or nay"? It's, take five minutes to do it and then you have it. If you need to change it later, it's still the same thing.
We can all take this home and digest it and have highlight areas and maybe we can do that, I mean, I-
And I still need one, because I don't have one.
I'm, I have, I did not look at that yesterday, so I'm, I'm recalling it from memory. She starts out by reprinting Robert's Rules of Order, possible suggestions for running a quick meeting. And she says, "You, you, I suggest you adopt this." The rest of the book is nothing, but she takes page 30 and shows the order of, of, uh, so, yeah, I don't mind if you, you know, but you can't, you, you don't need to adopt it, it's already in here if you want to refer to that, because it's easier for you to refer to it, that's fine. I don't care, you know, but-
No, I understand, I'm just saying that, that, that's my idea of the, why they did is to help it, us accomplish a meeting.
Yeah, and, and, you know, you didn't go to the training for the, on the Robert's Rules of Orders because you said you didn't agree with that style.
I'm sorry, what now?
They had training for Robert's Rules of Orders not too long ago and you said you didn't go because you, you didn't agree with that style of training? I guess it was on a webinar, I had to work.
Yeah.
I didn't, I don't see it, I didn't see it. Oh, it wasn't on Robert's Rules of Order, because I love Robert's Rules of Order, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
To put it mildly.
And, you know, actually, Robert's Rules tells you that you, if you want to, and, and, you know, we can do it. You can adopt that, okay? But I'm, I do want to make some, I want to suggest some changes to those rules. You can adopt that because Robert says you have adopted Robert as your fallback parliamentary procedures. Anytime there's anything in there that, anytime there's a problem or a question that's not covered in there, you go to Robert's Rules of Order.
I, I, I would like to put this on hold, I would like to talk to the municipal league and find out what they recommend before we, because this just seems like it's all getting skewed.
Can I, can I get that little book? I hope you have that.
Yeah, I got it, it, at the training and it came from-
Oh, I thought you had enough for everybody.
Not this training, but the one we had a couple of years ago.
From the University of Arkansas?
University of Arkansas Extension Center, I think.
Yeah. And they sent up 100 copies, I think Kim Stryker has them.
Okay, because Kim might have one for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we'll just, um, I guess leave this on the agenda for the next meeting.
I, I don't under, I'd just like to ask, when you read those, you said you disagreed with the one that said, "No secondary motion, no second to a motion."
I think there should be two motions.
Right. So all, I'm saying the same thing, let's adopt those and then make, discuss some possible changes to them. That's all, I don't, it's-
Why don't you at the next meet, why don't you bring those changes?
Bring what?
Bring your recommendations to the next meeting.
Well, they're right here.
I know, but you can print them out for all of us and we can- I know, but you can print them out for all of us, and we can take a look at it.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting the commission needs, is to have them printed out, so I'd love to do that.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. Everybody got a 2021 schedule?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. What is not on here is agenda planning, so we're keeping the Parliamentary Procedure Rules. We're going to follow up on the Jim Von Toglen visit.
Could we go back to meeting schedule? It says approval.
I have a motion to approve the meeting schedule?
Oh, I made a motion that we approved the meeting minutes, schedule, our meeting schedule of 2021.
Second?
All in favor?
Discussion?
Yes, Bob.
You, if the council gives the Vision Plan back to us to update, we're going, we're not, and even with this R2 system, you can always see, meeting once a month, it takes you forever to get something done. I just would like to see us go back to two meetings a month, and you can cancel, all you got to do is cancel, cancel, cancel. But according to the city attorney, if you adopt this, you can only call special meetings.
Right, workshops.
So if we want, not a workshop, a special meeting, you can only call special meetings. So if we want to, you know, if we get back the Vision Plan, if we have our open meeting on R2, okay, we have it on June 8th, so we have to wait till July to, you know, to discuss what happened at that, at that workshop, you know? I just think that we need to have two meetings a month. That's my, just my personal opinion.
Okay, there's been a second to approve the agenda meetings. Any more discussion?
Okay, my understanding was you dropped from two meetings to one because you couldn't get enough people here.
Correct.
Okay. Is Jody just absent today, or has she left?
No, she's just absent today.
Okay, so we're one seat short?
We're one seat short.
Okay.
But, you know, I also look at it as we're volunteers, we're not paid to be here. I don't have a problem coming for a special meeting. I don't have a problem coming and doing the workshop before the meeting. So...
How much business do we have? Do we have enough for two meetings, generally speaking?
We haven't recently.
Yeah, there's been hardly, I mean, because of COVID thing, there's been a lot less work. I mean, literally, it's, and that's one of the other reasons is COVID, because...
And wouldn't there be any reason that we could not, if we get the Vision, the Master Plan, is there any reason we can't go in and modify the meetings?
We should be able to amend if we go ahead and...
You could not amend that?
If we go ahead and take this schedule today, we should be able to amend it, say, in two months when we've got enough people and stuff.
Exactly.
Can't we do that, Bob? Wouldn't that work?
You know, when the city council was discussing, and you were the one that was so upset about the November meeting, and the city attorney advised the council to schedule the November meeting, because you can always cancel it.
That's true.
But if you, if you need one, you can't add it in. That, he didn't talk, say anything about amendments.
Well, you have to have a time period, it's not that you can't add one.
Is there any reason we, there's no reason we can't do a special meeting if something comes up? There's no reason we can't do a workshop, because the workshops certainly aren't on here. So, I don't know, it's up to you.
And, you know, the other thing is the venue. I mean, you know, there's all these other commissions and all these other areas that we're bumping into, so, I mean, it's probably, Glennon probably could tell us more, but I mean, it would be, I mean, it would be an acrobatic time to try to find a slot for us.
Yeah. This, our Tuesday night. Well, this, adopting this did not get a second, so I would like...
We're still discussing.
Well, okay.
Tom had something he wanted to say.
City council talked about the Vision Plan last night, did you see it, Bob?
I've heard, yeah.
And they kind of said, "Well, you know, they wanted to hear the chairman's, I think you're going to be at the next city council meeting," they wanted, you know, they talked about asking questions, they talked about having maybe a workshop, or asking questions, or submitting questions, and maybe we want to wait and see, as far as the Vision Plan goes, see what the city council wants us to do, as far as the commission, that may, because that seemed like that's the main thing we have on our agenda, is the Vision Plan. The city council said have a workshop, and we don't have to have, worry about having, on our agenda, where it'll be on some workshop the city council is involved in, or maybe the city council puts it back to us again, you know? So they weren't very clear about what they wanted to do. But I think they wanted to hear from you at the next meeting, and they may give us more direction at that time, which...
So do you want us to hold off on...
Well, I'm not saying that maybe, if the Vision Plan is the main thing we're talking about, having two meetings, it may be worthwhile to find out what the city council is going to do with the Vision Plan before we decide whether to have one meeting a month or two meetings a month.
We can hold it off till next month.
Okay.
Bob?
Well, I would, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion to amend the motion to approve the schedule, and I'm going to say that we should amend it to meet the, what, second and fourth Tuesdays of every month?
Bob, can we say second and fourth as needed?
No, because what you're doing is you are telling the citizens when you're going to have meetings.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah. So...
Hmm. I think I'd rather hold off until next meeting, just to wait and see. I don't know, I'm used to, this is my fourth time on, I'm used to two weeks.
I guess currently still under these Robert's Rules of Orders, and we don't need a second motion.
Oh, that's true.
Let's do a roll call vote. Yeah, Bob, let's do a roll call vote.
Huh?
Let's do a roll call vote.
On, this is on the amendment to have two meetings a month?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Ms. Lee?
No.
Mr. Stewart?
No.
Ms. Bredele's not here. Mr. Buford?
No.
Ms. Schneider?
Pass.
What?
Pass.
Pass. Mr. Bob Thomas?
Yes.
The motion failed.
Okay, I want to put in, we, there is no place for agenda items. Does anybody have an agenda item for next time? Or if you don't now, and you do later, please send it to Glennon. Commissioner comments, Bob?
Hopefully, the council will give the Vision Project back to planning, where it belongs. I kept asking one commissioner, one council person today, I said, "It's a planning vision. What, we are the planning commission, what connection are you people missing here?" But, so I do hope they'll give it back to us. I don't think that we'll be, that will be resolved by the next meeting, so, you know, I think we'll be just in limbo for quite some time.
Mickey?
It's going to take me a while to get up to speed. This is my first, fourth time on, but it has been quite a while. So just hang in there and help me out.
Tom?
No comments.
My only comment was, you know, I just wanted to say that last night's meeting at the council was, I agree with Terry McClung's opinion on that an ordinance with no teeth is a waste of time, so that's all I got to say.
Mickey, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
And thank you, everyone, for coming, and Glennon, let us know if we need to do a special meeting. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
No moves.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned, meeting adjourned.